Thank you. Welcome to the Clinton School Committee meeting for Monday, December 4th, 2023. I have a motion to approve the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any none, all in favor? Thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes for school committee meeting November 6, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Abstained.
Dr. Meyer.
Okay. So we've got quite a few celebrations tonight. The, in addition to our normal staff and student of the month, we have our John Abigail Adams Scholars. The John Abigail Adams Scholars are recognized for their achievement on the MCAS, so it's seniors who are being recognized for their achievement on their MCAS in grade 10. And not only do they have to get certain scores, but they have to be in a certain percentile within their class. And it does come with a scholarship to state colleges, and they'll get information about that if they haven't already. But we do want to recognize those students, so to do that, I've invited Mr. Sermack up.
If you guys want to, you can, you want to stand in front and sort of shake hands, whatever you want to do.
Good evening, everyone. Ooh, he can hear me, I guess. John and Abigail Adams recipients, when I call your name, please come up on the stage. You're going to enter from your right, come across the stage, get your award from Mr. Bailey, shake hands, and go see Mr. Meyer, and then exit on the left. Anthony Agrida. Esmeralda Alicia. Ava Askren. Ryan Bailey. James Baker. Theo Carnes. Hannah Castrataro. Amanda Champagne. Madison Cunha. Diego Di Fritas. Maria Cecilia de Sousa. Matthews Dos Santos. Jenna Dumas. Alexander Ford. Camden Grady. Alice Harris. Emily Johns. Paige Johnston. Ariel Larabee. Edith Lopez Tolentino. Josh Luth. Will Mifert. Carrie Beth Mello. Raymond Notaro. Kaylee Pointon. Lucas Rodriguez. Sarah Santos. Hannah Schoolcraft. Emily Silva. Anderson Solano Meja. Nathan Stone. Joel Teru. Oscar Turcot. Clever Veliz Aguilar. Michael Welsh. Isabel Young. Congratulations to our John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Award winners. I'm now going to move on with the Clinton High School Staff and Student Awards. Each month, we have our students and staff nominate someone, and we do that during our advisory time. Nominated, our staff are nominated by students, our students are nominated by staff. This year's staff winner is Mr. Tobias Crowley. Mr. Crowley, before you come up and before you applaud, I want to read what the student wrote about Mr. Crowley. "Mr. Crowley is a good teacher. He encourages us to learn and shows us how and what we are learning in class applies to our projects we make in the woodshop. Even though woodworking in the woodshop is fun, Mr. Crowley sometimes rewards us with donuts because he's nice." Mr. Crowley, come on up. The student of the month is Jalissa Neves. I'm going to read this, Jalissa. "I've had Jalissa in class for two years. Over the past two years, I've seen Jalissa work hard, show resilience, and be a leader, both in the classroom and as an athlete. Recently, I witnessed a conversation between her and another student that really made me so proud of her. Jalissa was having a meaningful conversation with this student about how important it is for them to make up their missing work and stay on task. On top of all things, Jalissa managed so well, she also prioritizes her family and close relationships." Ladies and gentlemen, Jalissa Neves. I would now like to invite to the podium Mrs. Jennifer Lamontaine, CMS principal.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to recognize Cameron Bamforth as the student of the month at Clinton Middle School. Cameron, I'm going to read this first, and then you can come up. "Cameron is a shining example of what embodies a true Gail at our school. Cameron, a fifth-grade student at CMS, embodies dedication, kindness, and exceptional work ethic in everything he does. His commitment to excellence is evident in his approach to every task, coupled with his kind demeanor towards both challenges and peers. Cameron actively participates in classroom activities and extends his leadership skills beyond, making a significant impact in our school community. His influence as a role model spans across various school activities, including his enthusiastic involvement in PBIS, the school play, and sports. Cameron's brightness, drive, and remarkable abilities mark a promising journey ahead for Cameron here at the middle school and beyond. Cameron, congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. Your dedication and positive impact do not go unnoticed. We are thrilled to witness your continued growth and success. Please join me in congratulating Cameron Bamforth for his outstanding contributions and commitment to CMS." Come on up. I am thrilled to announce Nancy Milliken, our exceptional school nurse, as the CMS staff member of the month. She's unable to join us this evening, but I'll share with you a few words about her. Nancy plays a crucial role in our school community, overseeing the well-being of nearly 600 students and about 80 staff members. She manages this extensive caseload with remarkable kindness, grace, and professionalism, ensuring that everyone feels cared for and supported. Her dedication and commitment to ensuring the health and safety of our school community do not go unnoticed. Nancy's ability to manage this significant responsibility seamlessly is a testament to her dedication and exceptional skills as a school nurse. We want to extend our heartfelt gratitude to Nancy for her tireless efforts and the invaluable care she provides to our students and staff every single day. Her presence and contributions truly make a difference in the lives of everyone at CMS. Please join me in congratulating Nancy for being selected as the staff member of the month at CMS. At this time, I would like to welcome Principal Silvio up to the stage.
Good evening, everyone. At the elementary school, we have our staff nominate each other for staff of the month, and they also nominate students. So tonight, we are thrilled to present our staff of the month as Mr. Miguel Cordero. He was nominated by several staff members for his work ethic and as being an asset to our entire school community. When he isn't there, he is missed, even if it's a day. Our building is 20 years old, and the condition of our building is pristine under his leadership. Miguel comes to work and prioritizes needs on what is best for the entire school community every single day. He is a positive asset to our school, and he never complains. He is proactive in his communication and ensures he does all he can to keep our school in the top-notch shape that it is today. He is always there to check in, say hello, listen to his colleagues, and provides immediate attention to any custodial need. He is great with our students, and they love to say hello to Mr. Miguel. He is valued and appreciated by many in our school community, and we are very proud to recognize him here this evening. Next, we are proud to present Ms. Birdie McNally as our student of the month. She was nominated by several teachers, both this year and last year. Birdie demonstrates perseverance every day at Clinton Elementary School. She works incredibly hard to overcome any challenges that come her way. The teachers that nominated her report her as a student that brings joy to the day, and she is always kind to everyone she comes in contact with. She never complains, and she never gives up. She always keeps trying, and she sees the good in all things. One teacher wrote, hold on, I'm not going to cry, "If more people in the world could be like Birdie McNally, there'd be a lot less negativity in the world." Her classmates were so proud of her and congratulated her on this well-deserved recognition. Out of a school of close to 900 students, Birdie was recognized as our student of the month. We want to thank Birdie for the joy she brings to our school and the perseverance she demonstrates every day as a model student. These qualities will certainly serve her well.
All right, we're getting there. A lot of awards tonight, but that's good. It's nice to recognize our students' accomplishments. The next award is the Superintendent's Award. So every year, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents sponsors an award luncheon, and each superintendent is able to recognize one student, and then we go to the luncheon, usually held at one of the local colleges in Worcester. And all those students are recognized by the Worcester County Superintendent's Association for their accomplishments. This year's recipient of the Superintendent's Association, the Worcester County Superintendent's Association Scholar Award is Ava Askren. Ava, I'll say a couple of things, and I'll have you come up. So Ava is, currently, she's number one in her class. There were some things that they have you fill out as part of this award, so one of the things, she was asked what her top three academic accomplishments are, and she highlighted being a MidWatch League Academic All-Star for indoor track and cross-country, receiving school-wide awards for the highest average in AP Language and Composition, AP Calculus AB, and AP Calculus BC, and participating in the Introduction to Surgery Summer Program through the Boston Leadership Institute. As far as her top three non-academic accomplishments that she highlighted are her community service, including coaching an under-12 softball team, organizing a community service project that donated softball and baseball equipment to those that may not have access otherwise, and getting to advancing to the MIA Final Four in softball in the spring of 2023. Our favorite quote, "Success is not the result of spontaneous combustion; you must set yourself on fire," by Reggie Leach. Congratulations, Ava. All right, our last recognition of the evening, you know, typically at the end of the year, if we have school crew members who are not serving again, we recognize them when we do our retirees. This year, we did have a school crew member who needed to leave his term a little bit early. However, he has served as a member of this board for 10 years, from 2013 to 2023, including, I don't know how many years as the chair, I'm sure I should have looked that up, but many. And it was, it was good to work with him because he's always brought the perspective of an educator in another district, which always helped, particularly during some of the challenging times that we went through. So I'd like to present this plaque to, it reads, "This is presented to Joel Bates in appreciation for your time, effort, and professional commitment to the Clinton School Committee and to the students of Clinton. The Clinton Public School District is grateful for all that you have done for our programs and community, 2013 to 2023." Congratulations, Mr. Bates.
At this time, we're going to carry on with the rest of this. Yikes. We're going to do the rest of our meeting now. You're welcome to stay, but obviously, you're not going to. So have a good evening. Behave yourself, Ryan. Oh, is that one not working now? Do we have anyone here for public comment? Anyone, a student rep?
We have a student rep tonight, yep. Welcome to come right up to the podium and share your update.
Good evening, everyone. The student council has had a busy few months. Our Pink fundraiser was a great success, having raised over $1,300. 60% of the final funds will be donated to Pink Revolution of New Hampshire. CHS also hosted a blood drive on October 26th. We had 41 donations, which will result in 123 individuals being helped or saved. We also broke the goal that the Rhode Island Blood Center set for us. Spirit Week just ended at CHS with great friendly competition between the grades. The seniors came out on top, winning Spirit Week 2023. More importantly, as a school, we were able to collect more than 1,500 pounds of food and more than 1,600 diapers to get, to go to those in need. As we move into the holiday season, we are happy to announce that the student council has set up a giving tree in the high school. This tree holds ornaments with the holiday wishes from children in need from our surrounding communities. Simply grab an ornament with the age and gift for a child and return it unwrapped to the high school to be donated to that family. We hope to bring hope and joy to all families during this holiday season. Please follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, and thank you for your continued support. Have a good night.
Thank you. Enter from the CTA.
Good evening. We met a couple of weeks ago with Dr. Meyer and went through a long list of some little concerns and received a lot of information and shared ideas and got feedback, which is helping to make our schools better. We also met with Principal Silvio again and addressed some issues, as well as Principal Lamontaine at the middle school. So we're working hard to make our community a better place. The biggest issue facing our board right now is it's come to our attention that the town is looking into changes in health insurance. I know that's not your preview, but it's one that affects all of our members. So that's our biggest issue on a radar right now. And we plan to have our holiday board meeting at O'Connor's next Wednesday night. Thank you.
I would say that I did, I did follow up with the, some of the health insurance questions. I reached out to Mr. Ward, so we're, they're aware of it, and they're working on it, and I'll try to see if we can get for any information. But for those of you who don't, don't, aren't aware, the town of Clinton is through the Neshova Minuteman Health Collaborative, and what's happening is it seems like a lot of towns are starting to drop out of that, which means it could potentially increase in either, result in either large rate increases or possibly the dissolution of that whole consortium, which means we'd have to look for an alternate healthcare provider. So that's where we are. Yeah.
PTA.
So a lot's happened since November, but I'm keeping it brief, I promise. Our first catalog fundraiser that we had at CES was quite a success. We grossed over $11,000 in sales. $2,000 were straight donations, so that comes right to the PTA for the school. We get 40% of the actual sales, so that comes right back to us. So the kids did amazing, the teachers did amazing, we're so thankful. Order pickup is slated in the next couple of weeks and will be communicated as soon as we have the exact delivery date, but we have been notified that the orders have been filled and they're being shipped. So yay! We kicked off the CMS Book Fair today. It was great. I was there all day. The kids were amazing, the teachers as well. It was so fun. It's going to be running all week. Wednesday, we have our special dinner and book fair evening event that is going to be held at the CMS. So dinner will be in the cafeteria, the book fair is in the conference room off the library. The best part is, is dinner is free. You are going to get, per person, a slice of pizza, a drink, and a cupcake on us. Please come and enjoy. We look forward to seeing you.
Hi, everybody. So on November, beginning of November, we did our Thanksgiving International Activity for the Elpac. We have over 100 people attend. We have, we enjoy the, with family, we share food, dance, we have Ms. Quest with the band, with the middle school band. We have two students from high school that made a dance from Guatemala. It was very fun. We had teachers painting faces, we had all the ESL teachers in the activity. We have one administration over there. And family were enjoying the night, meeting people, meeting family, and knowing more about the school. Hopefully, we're going to meet to make another activity in the spring for the International Night. We want to bring that back. And hopefully, administration can join us, so family can know more of you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Meyer. All right. So just a couple staffing updates. We do have some new hires. Stephanie Munoz is a new hire. She is the new Special Education Administrative Assistant in the Special Ed Office. She's basically taking over Cindy McNally's position. So she started recently to kind of cross-train a little bit with Cindy gets ready for retiring. We did hire Danielle DeRocher. She is ABA IA. She's technically hired as a long-term sub right now for maternity leave, but she's been, she's already been a daily sub. So we made her a little bit more permanent on a short-term contract and we'll see how that, hopefully, that can land into something more permanent for her if we get any openings. And Erin O'Toole, we hired as the TLC or the Therapeutic Learning Center Classroom Teacher at Clinton Middle School. I believe she starts right after the break. So those are our new hires. Next on the agenda was the facilities up. We have two things here, updates, and we're going to talk a little bit about athletic storage, complex storage units. Director Farraghar was not able to make it today. I think he's in Florida with the football team. Yeah. I'll have to, I'll have to schedule his meetings better in the future. The, so he, his report is in here. I don't need to go through all of it for you. If you have any questions, we did meet together to go over it. As you can tell, the high school auditorium lighting and sound project is completed. You don't, we don't have that buzzing noise we used to have. So the lighting and sound in here has been, has been fixed. We're still working on temperature control, I guess, but, but the lighting and sound has been fixed. I think the last thing we have for that is they recommended, right now, we still have some of the circuits are controlled by circuit breakers and they recommended that we add switches, so we're not controlling with circuit breakers, so they might come back to add those switches, but all the circuits are operational. So you can see the articles that were approved last year, the new mower he's working on, they're getting quotes, they're still working through the procurement process on that, opening to order this month. There was the storage athletic complex, storage structure, athletic complex repairs. He's kind of in the initial procurement stage of that, but that's what we're going to talk about, the shed. He's also got, through the select board, $71,500 was requested and approved for, from ARPA funding. Part of that is to do a couple HVAC projects at the high school here, replacing some of those overhead units that get noisy, like the one in the library. Purchasing new filters for all the classrooms and office spaces and looking at some portable AC units for the middle school or office spaces. We're trying to make sure that we, it's not a big rush on those, because obviously we don't really need them right now, but we're trying to identify which are the ones that we, we need. We're still going through some challenges, particularly on that, I guess, sort of the southern side of the, of the middle school on the first floor. The, you know, elementary school, middle school, he just keeps doing minor, minor things, getting all the systems trying to run. And I don't know if anyone has any, any questions on any of his updates. So the big one in here, you'll see there is a, there's a quote for $37,350. And what that is for is that's to order three, basically like prefab, storage units that are, each unit is 20 by 10. Those would be located, basically, kind of like behind the track area inside the fence. So if you were, if you were like in the bleachers and you went down to the track and you turned right and you went down to the end towards the, towards the railroad tracks, they would be back there. The idea of these units is primarily to hold our track equipment, our mats and those types of things. If you remember, the one warrant article was for the, trying to get that shed at the end of the, replace the containers and put a shed at the end of the driveway, of the parking lot there. And one of the things that we found when we were looking at that was we were a little bit constrained on space down there because we didn't want to encroach on the right-of-way for the power lines. So what we thought was, could we look at getting the athletics component separate from the facilities component and putting these sheds up by the track area? So if you, if you want to approve this, then this would be $37,350. That money would come from our rental of facilities account. That's what we would pay this part out of. And basically, so it's the money that, you know, we rent out the parking lot anyway to like movies and that kind of stuff that goes into that account. We could cover this out of that account. He would cover any of the, the site work and the prep for the, for getting it ready out of the facilities. I don't know if it's out of the warrant article or his operating budget, but he was going to cover that part and we were going to try to cover the shed. So if you guys are okay with it, you could make a motion to allow me to go forward with it now. If you want to think about it or see more or have any questions, we can always, you know, bring it back at a later meeting.
Steve, is that $37,000 separate from the original article that was approved to put an A-frame building of some sort to replace those?
So right now, the way we would be doing it would be kind of keeping it separate until, so that we're not sort of eating into that article until we know what that's going to be. Because I think we can afford this, this is a, these prefab units is a one-time expense and we, we know we can afford that out of the rental facilities account.
Okay.
I don't, like I said, I'm not sure the site prep, because we're going to put pads down there, so that they're concrete pads, so they're level. I think, I'm not sure if he was taking that out of the warrant article or if he was taking that out of operating, but that, but I know that he was going to cover that part.
Cool. Yeah, I think just some clarity around that as we move forward with it, but I'm, I'm fine with it otherwise. I was just curious if that was still going to happen, because I know that that was a need for us to be able to store equipment there to get down to the fields and that was kind of the original thought around that, you know, putting the small building there.
Well, and one of the main things we want to do with the small building is to get, clean up the facilities equipment and get that stuff tucked away and protected. So what we're thinking is this might actually work out a little better. I mean, but, because what it'll do is it'll kind of keep, it'll sort of keep, that shed then would be just a facility shed really, and this would be more athletic storage, so we wouldn't be really mingling the two.
There's storage units out there now, though, of some kind, isn't there?
There's like old containers at the end, yeah. And the goal is to get rid of those.
So these would be replacing?
Yes, because those are not, I don't know, over the years, those have worn and they're not, they don't really protect much. A lot of, a lot of things get in there.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to, to authorize Steve to spend that 37, 37...
350?
350 from the shadow fund. So moved.
It'll be from the rental of facilities. Yep.
Any further discussion? I think none, all in favor?
All right. Thank you. I'll let Director Farraghar know and hopefully we can get moving on this as soon as we can. And just so you know, one of the other things is we have, we have been sort of trying to temporarily store the track stuff in the old fire station, too. So that's why we've been keeping it, because the containers are, aren't really effective. So this will get us out of that building as well.
It's super important, too, because that just protects our investment we made two years ago on all the equipment.
On those mats, yep. All right. So thank you for that. CMS middle school update, MSBA update, excuse me. In your packet is essentially, you guys saw this same exact presentation last Wednesday. I just figured I would include it in our minutes here. Just sort of that frequently asked questions about the middle school. You know, we are, I think the next, the next main thing, I believe it's tomorrow or Wednesday, proposals are due, written proposals are due from our, the three shortlisted construction management firms. And then it's a week from Wednesday on December 13th is the interviews with those three firms. The Permanent Building Committee will be interviewing those three firms in an effort to select a construction manager for the remainder of the feasibility portion of the, of the project. So we are down to, we are down to three firms. We had 10 that had originally applied and we had to go through a qualification process to get it down to, we actually got down to four and then one withdrew. Are there any specific updates or things on the, and I know, like I said, I know we went through this on, at the Selectment Meeting on the 29th, so I don't want to rehash the entire thing. I just sort of wanted to get it into our minutes. So I don't know if anyone has anything in particular that they wanted to share or question or elaborate on.
Were you, did you, you had a scheduled session to be done at the Clinton Senior Center? Did that take place?
It hasn't. I want to say it's the 9th. I think the 9th I might be going in the morning, and then I think the 14th I'm going in the afternoon. So I think I'm going twice to Senior Center.
Oh, you're going twice.
Yeah, I think I'm doing a morning session and an afternoon session. I'll probably try to bring these types of things here, so people can get those, you know, question, answer handouts, and then I would just try to see what else they might have as questions.
Something they could take home.
Yeah. And then if they have any other questions, then we can try to fold those into maybe adding on to this document or whatever when we address those, just so we can try to continue to, to get the word out.
Is that something we can put on our Facebook page, too, maybe to?
That I'll be at the Senior Center? Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, that sounds good. I'll, I'll make sure that we promote that. I know it was in the, I know Ms. Goodstall sent me the, it was in her senior newsletter, but I'll make sure that we, we put it in their Facebook or social media. All right. All right. Any other questions or comments on where we are with the building project right now? All right. I think our next full Building Committee meeting is December 19th. All right. The next one in here with the, the fall sports wrap-up. So this is just prepared by Athletic Director Smith, just kind of gives you a rundown of how our fall sports did, and the list of All-Stars and, in the case of field hockey, we had a league MVP and all those, all those awards and accolades. I don't need to necessarily go through all of them if you, unless you guys have any particular questions or, or comments. We did get new, we do have the new scoreboards while we're here tonight. If you haven't, we can check the, you can check out the new scoreboard. I know that, like the second day they were in, I went down there and the, the PE teachers were using them just in their regular class, because now they can be controlled by like an app, so they can just do a game in class and actually use a board. So it was kind of, it was kind of neat. So hopefully those are a nice addition and that we'll be able to hopefully, we got to figure out how complicated it is. We'll definitely do it for varsity level, but try to figure out how we can track all the player points and fouls right up on the board, too. So we have that. And then the winter sports kicked off on Monday, the 28th. You can see them all listed there, including our co-ops in ice hockey, swimming and diving, wrestling and gymnastics. And the, there's one other thing I just was thinking that I wanted to share. Oh, I know what it is. The fall, you know, we try to do the survey after every season to the parents. I know that, I don't know if that was out. Did we get that? Yeah, so that'll go out tomorrow. So we've got the, the survey, we have the survey itself ready and I know that Kelly was working on just getting some of the, getting the email list created properly. So those should get, the fall sports survey should get emailed out tomorrow and then we'll use that information to do the year-end meetings with the coaches.
Steve, I just have one thing on the, on the, or the fall sports. So I was reading through this and you're right, a lot of them did well, you know, with playoffs and whatnot, but the, the cross-country program where they were awarded the, the mid-walk, the sportsmanship award. I don't, I know they used to do that years ago and I hadn't heard, you know, recently, but to me, that's more important than the championships, the fact that, you know, that our, our student athletes and our coaches are, you know, noted as, as, you know, the sportsmanship and how, and how they conduct themselves, you know, just as well as, as winning championships. So I don't know any of the kids playing or running the track, but congratulations.
Well, there's a lot and I know we have a connection to one of the coaches in the cross-country program here. But you're right, those, those sportsmanship awards are, are just as, you know, we try to recognize those just as well, just as much as the other successes of our, of our teams. All right. Any other questions on athletics for that update?
We're, we're still all non-fee based, right? For all?
Correct. No user fees, yep. And that's one of the things, that's why, one of the challenges we actually had in the fall was putting together JV schedules, because a lot, a lot of schools are, their participation is down and teams that historically have had JV teams haven't had them. So it's been a challenge for us, because our, our numbers continue to grow and we got to try to find teams to, to play. So, so that's, I mean, that's a good problem to have, right? So FY24 Fund Code 274 Targeted Special Education Program Improvement Grant. That's just a grant that we have been awarded, so I just wanted to share that with you. There's a letter in there from Maury Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll. This was for $21,769. It's part of the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Act, Part B. And the main thing that it's being used for is to support the transition to the new IEP, which I know you've heard us kind of talk about before. So particularly, a lot of this is going to go towards some of the technological backend stuff that we need to do to transition that over, to make all, make sure all our records are into the new IEP. And last, I think it's the last thing I had here yet, was just some budget development stuff. And these are just some preliminary thoughts. You know, we had a meeting about, a budget meeting with our administrative team a couple weeks ago to kind of kick off the, the budget season and, and they'll be starting to gather, you know, their input and needs from their staff and departments and we'll start bringing all those together as we try to, try to build a FY25 budget. Some of the things that we're really trying to think about in this budget are looking at increasing early college and career innovation pathways for students. I know Principal Sermac and I have had a lot of meetings this year with people from like Mount Wachusett or Pittsburgh State and a lot of that, to really try to work on getting some of those designations.
I know they used to do that years ago, and I hadn't heard recently, but to me, that's more important than the championships, the fact that, you know, that our student athletes and our coaches are noted as, you know, the sportsmanship and how they conduct themselves, you know, just as well as winning championships. So I don't know any of the kids playing or running the track, but congratulations.
Well, there's a lot, and I know we have a connection to one of the coaches in the cross-country program here. But you're right, those sportsmanship awards are just as, you know, we try to recognize those just as well, just as much as the other successes of our, of our teams. All right, any other questions on athletics for that update?
We're still all non-fee based, right?
Correct, no user fees, yep. And that's one of the things, that's why, one of the challenges we actually had in the fall was putting together JV schedules, because a lot, a lot of schools are, their participation is down, and teams that historically have had JV teams haven't had them, so it's been a challenge for us, because our numbers continue to grow, and we got to try to find teams to play. So that's, and that's a good problem to have, right? FY24 Fund Code 274 Targeted Special Education Program Improvement Grant, that's just a grant that we have been awarded, so I just wanted to share that with you. There's a letter in there from Maury Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll. This was for $21,769. It's part of the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Act, Part B, and the main thing that it's being used for is to support the transition to the new IEP, which I know you've heard us kind of talk about before. So particularly, a lot of this is going to go towards some of the technological backend stuff that we need to do to transition that over, to make all, make sure all our records are into the new IEP. And last, I think it's the last thing I had here yet, was just some budget development stuff, and these are just some preliminary thoughts. You know, we had a meeting about, a budget meeting with our administrative team a couple weeks ago to kind of kick off the budget season, and they'll be starting to gather, you know, their input and needs from their staff and departments, and we'll start bringing all those together as we try to, try to build a FY25 budget. Some of the things that we're really trying to think about in this budget are looking at increasing early college and career innovation pathways for students. I know Principal Sormack and I have had a lot of meetings this year with people from like Mount Wachusett, or Pittsburgh State, and a lot of that, to really try to work on getting some of those designations and building some of those career innovation pathways. And as you'll see, there's a couple positions in here that we're looking at possibly adding, that basically what we're saying is, we would be funding those probably with some of the savings from ASABET tuition. And I think that that's the reality, is that we haven't really seen much of a change in the ASABET admissions process since their major change, so we know that, you know, we really need to start trying to build out some of these career innovation pathways as well to meet the needs of our own, our own students. Work on building the work down with Commonwealth Consulting by building in-house capacity to effectively implement high-quality curriculum with fidelity and support, and support effective Tier One instruction to meet the needs of all students. So as you know, we've been doing a lot of work with Commonwealth Consulting over the last few years. That's pretty much all grant-funded, whether it was through ESER, or Title I, or Title II, or quite often a combination of those. I think at some point, you know, consultants are good to help you get something going, but at some point you don't want to live off consultants forever, you want to start building your in-house capacity, so that's one of the things we're, we're looking at, and we'll talk a little more about what some of our thoughts are on that. Continuing to examine the schedule at the middle school, try to allow some more time for intervention while maximizing time on learning, and also maybe looking at the ability to provide common planning time for staff at the middle school, and potentially sharing staff between the middle school and high school whenever we can, so, or if necessary, or when possible. So we're kind of looking a little bit at the middle school, that, that schedule right now that they're on, just to see if we could kind of make some tweaks, and we've had some preliminary meetings with the leadership over there to kind of get some ideas going. We haven't really nailed down anything, but we've, we've gotten to certain stages where I think we know certain things are possible. That was the first thing, like, do we think it's possible? And then from there, kind of, we got to go down and eventually hash it out and get some staff input and those types of things. Providing more opportunities and oversight for extracurricular programming, making programs less dependent on the availability of advisors, and more focused on opportunities for students, and creating a fiscally responsible and sustainable budget that accounts for the ending of ESER funding. So those are some of like the big picture things, like as we're, as we're building our budget, these are some of those goals that we're trying to sort of address. You know, will we be able to address them all? I don't know, but that's as we go into the preliminary budget, those are some of the things we're thinking about. Some staffing considerations, one of the things we're thinking about is looking at something like a Director of Curriculum and Instruction. I know that the district used to have sort of that position a long time ago, I think that's actually what Mr. Ngano's, he was kind of in that role before he became Superintendent, and then I think that position ended up getting cut. But I think with a lot of the work we've done with Commonwealth Consulting, having someone in that role to kind of like continue to lead that work in-house or support that work would be, would be, I think it's about where we are and sort of our growth. And like I said, must, if we're going to do that, I think a lot of that funding could be, come from grant funds as we kind of phase out the consultant. Special education director or coordinator type position, you know, this is one that we're not, you know, we've kind of tinkered with different special education models, whether it was ETFs, whether it wa, or ETLs, sorry, whether it was like a coordinator position to support the buildings, whether it was we had a special education administrator directly in the, in the elementary school. So it's just one of those things that we're keeping in mind as we continue to move forward with the new IEP form, and we just continue to see many students with complex disabilities. I was at a superintendent's meeting last month, and the Associate Commissioner, Russell Johnson, was there, who kind of is in charge of special ed, and he was just talking about the sheer volume of special ed complaints and, and the, that the state is receiving now, basically post-COVID, and a lot of those complaints are basically coming down to the fact that a lot of students are maybe not getting their services because simply the districts can't find staff to provide them. They want to, but they don't have the staff. So I do know that, you know, it's a challenging time for that, but I would say that, you know, we've been very, we've been very fortunate that we haven't had, we really haven't had any complaints, certainly no substantiated complaints from our district. So that was positive news. Looking at possibly the creation of a Director of Athletics Extracurricular Activities Program, we've talked about this a little bit last year, we kind of kicked it in there, it was always kind of talked about maybe bulking that position up. I think this position would be sort of in addition to that one, to kind of get one person overseeing the staffing, funding, and scheduling for all extracurricular activities, including athletics, hopefully allowing for the expansion of clubs, other activities, as well as creating equitable opportunities for participation in all sports, for all students. And some of those things, we talked about equitable participation, like if you look at, say, Neshoba, they're going to have different types of like unified sports, which we typically are allowing students with disabilities to more, to participate, and I think what's challenging is we really haven't done a lot with that here, probably because our size of that population might, it'd be challenging for us to field our own teams, but potentially looking at, maybe could we join, you know, with Neshoba's teams or something like that to provide more opportunities to our students? So there's some, some other things there. And then I also think, you know, part of what I tried to, plus this is not just athletics, but also extracurricular activities, I mean, there's, you know, one of the, like, one of the programs that's been a staple in Clinton forever is the FIRST program, right? So the FIRST program's been here since it started, and, you know, it's just one of those things that we want to make sure that we are providing support for that program structurally, so that it's not so dependent on one or two people, that if people retire or leave or anything like that, that we risk those programs falling off, right? So it's kind of like trying to institutionalize some of the support for those types of things, and with that in general, right? So if you have clubs or something that are maybe more driven by a particular advisor, if something, if there's a change in staffing for whatever, you don't want the, we don't want to lose those opportunities, we want to have someone that's sort of overseeing some of that. So we're looking at possible funding for that, could come from either athletics revolving account or school choice funds. We really haven't been doing, taking much out of the athletics revolving account recently, because to your point earlier, we don't charge user fees, so there's not a lot that goes in. What usually goes into athletics revolving is the gate from the events, and then a lot of times, a lot of the staff for the events are then paid out of that, so, you know, the scorekeepers or whoever. But there is some money in there, we could look at potentially that. And all those, those three positions, I'm not saying that those are all three things that are going to survive the budget, that they're even going to, you know, but these are considerations that as we look into preparing a preliminary budget, these are things we might look to try to incorporate into there. And then certainly what we would do, like our normal process, once we figure out what our Chapter 70 funding is, what that increase in aid looks like from the state, we're going to have to, you know, then kind of backdoor our way into a, into a manageable number with the town. And I know in the last, you know, last couple years, we've been fortunate with ESER funding and SOA funding, that we really haven't had to ask the town for any additional funds out of their sort of local revenue. All we've really been asking for is just passing through the Chapter 70 money that's been increased. So, you know, hopefully we can, we can hit a target like that. But like I said, our first goal needs to be looking at those positions that we've, that we have been funding with ESER funds, and making sure that we get those in the budget first. So there's a lot of, a lot of priorities here, but these are all just different things we've been thinking about. Same thing for the teachers, we probably need an additional math teacher at the high school, we have continuing growing numbers at the high school with the, you know, basically the extra 100 kids that are here because, or now it's going to next show be 75, because of the change in the ASABET admissions. And also looking at possibly an early college and career pathways counselor. That is one of the things the state wants to see, to get your designation for those pathways, is someone that's sort of dedicated to promoting that. And we think both those positions could potentially be funded by ASABET tuition savings. And then other possible considerations would be an additional art teacher or school adjustment counselor at the high school. That's just based on the current course enrollment and caseloads, but we'll, we'll see how those go. Clinton Middle School, we are trying to maybe look at an additional technology teacher, so that we might be able to introduce some of the Project Lead the Way into grades five or six, and possibly allow additional coverage, so we can maybe get some common planning time scheduled into that schedule as well. The elementary school, really what we're looking at is just maintaining the current levels of staffing, but that includes current unfilled positions, so there's two positions right now that are unfilled, that we would want to keep in the budget to fill for next year. Some other needs that we looked at, transportation coordinators, substitute van drivers, possibly an additional technology specialist. So these are all things that are like in our initial discussion of the budget. So other notes so far, five staff members have indicated they intend to retire by the end of the year, so we'll try to build in accordingly for that. Budgeting for both potential sick leave buyback costs, as well as potential savings through, in the salary line. And 48 CTA members have indicated they plan on moving lanes in the contract. When they move lanes, that's based on like getting your masters or 15 credits or that kind of stuff. The average lane change is about $1,500, so, you know, if you're looking at, call that 50 people, probably get a budget about $75,000 or so, at least in that lane change column and that, which we always have, I mean, that's in there every year, so we just have to make sure we get the right number. And I think that's kind of where we are. You know, our next step, our target is the preliminary budget to be unveiled at the tri-council meeting at the second meeting in January. Our next meeting is January 8th, and certainly, you know, at that meeting, if there's any, any feedback on any of these items, or anything else that you want me to make sure that we pay particular attention, or if you have any questions on these, we can either address them at that, you know, if you let me know, we can either address them at the next meeting, or if you want to, if any of you want to just, if you have questions directly from me, you can reach out to me between now and then.
Steve, I just got a quick question.
Yep.
I know when we had talked probably mid-last year, as the ESER funds are expiring, we were also seeing positive direction in the way they calculated student opportunity act money, right?
Yeah.
So do we, do we still expect to see that sort of like, yes, ESER's going away, but from a funding perspective, we're still, are we, we're seeing better numbers in regard to what's coming into us?
We should, yeah. We don't have that final numbers, we'll, we'll figure out how they funded it, you know, what level they're funding it at in January.
Okay.
But yes, so we're expecting another positive trend. The other big thing, I don't know if you remember this, but I said it kind of is in a delay where if you charge tuition for a student, you don't get Chapter 70 money for them, okay? But if you don't charge tuition for a student, you do. So it was actually one of the things that the state reached out to us to question was we didn't claim any of our pre-K students as paying tuition this year, and, or last year, right? Because when they, it's always kind of been a lag when they do their Chapter 70 funding, and they wanted to confirm that that was correct, and we were like, yes, that is correct. So I also think we'll see, we'll probably see the little, the kick-up of, there should be more Chapter 70 money included for those, those pre-K students now that we've made that tuition free as well.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
That's all I have, yep.
All right. The advisory committees, I see the curriculum has a meeting.
Yep. Wednesday, are we in a meeting? Yep. Primary goal of that'll be to look at proposed changes to the high school program of studies, so that we can get that hopefully approved at the first meeting in January, so they can get going with the scheduling.
Nothing from the other committees?
I mean, we had the facilities update tonight.
Yeah, I had the facilities.
When's the, I know you said it tonight, I just didn't write it down, when's the next building committee meeting for the?
I think it's the 19th, December 19th, I think is the full committee.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, good on negotiations.
Yep.
Anything under old business? New business?
Oh, one thing I just want to add, just so you know, I'll probably put an executive session on the next agenda for the purpose of negotiations with non-union personnel. Well, we'll go, you know, we'll go over like administrative contracts and sort of talk about.
Okay.
What's ending and what we need to work on, that kind of stuff, so we'll probably do that at the next, next meeting.
Just a question about a follow-up meeting after we met with the Board of Selectmen, I didn't have a chance to really look at Friday's item, but did the ad go in for the vacancy?
I didn't, I don't, I don't think it was going to make last week's, because we were too late, it should be this Friday.
Oh, it'll be this week, okay.
Yeah, and that's why we had to kick it out a little bit, because we didn't get it in there for two weeks, yep.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?